It is seven o'clock and I would like to open the May Board of Managers meeting of Riley Purgatory, Buff Creek Watershed District. We have everyone here, so we're all present. Next is the approval of the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Second. I'd like to make a recommendation on how to change it.
Okay. What would you like to do?
I already say that. I want to move the manager report up into the other reports. Committee and member reports. So it would be I.
So just put all of the reports together under one item?
Do that. It sounds like a possible thing here, so let's.
The manager report or also the attorney?
The legal counsel.
Well, there are two other items, so that's the only reason I didn't suggest that one because there was, isn't that split out?
No, it's a different thing. And maybe it's moved because at the top of my head, I don't think I have anything for you tonight anyway.
Okay, so eight's got manager and council reports, manager report legal, and then nine has discussion items, so I didn't know.
We'll leave nine separate. Eight, just move all the manager reports, legal council reports.
Okay, so we have one change, any other changes? Hearing none.
Manager Peterson.
Yes.
And if we could, the, Terry, jump in as you like. Item?
Six B.
Six B, is it? My mouse doesn't want to work.
Okay.
The compliance hearing that was set for tonight.
It was three. It's gone now.
Item, oh, you took it off?
Yeah.
Okay. It was on a prior version of the agenda, but that, it was an enforcement matter in permit 2023-053. There've been steps, adequate steps taken toward compliance, and so staff has agreed with the property owner to delay the enforcement hearing, given that some of the elements of compliance where it had been complied with and we've seen strong indications that it's really in the right direction. So that was moved, yep.
Okay, any other changes? Hearing none, all those in favor with the amended agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, great. Next item is matters of public interest. Welcome to the board meeting. Anyone may address the board on any matter of interest in the watershed. Speakers will be acknowledged by the president. Please wait your hand and wait to be recognized. Date your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. And do we have anyone here who would like to speak? Mr. Cook?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name's Larry Cook, 4071 McCormick Drive, Chanhassen, Minnesota. Several items, I know I have limited time. First of all, actually going toward the bottom of the agenda regarding 7E and Lotus Lake, I think that the, this should be rethought, that we should, you should be allocating money to come up with a more detailed plan to analyze the effect of wake boats on Lotus Lake on that basis, especially the analyses and the survey of boat uses, et cetera, I think should be run concurrently. Doesn't mean, make much sense to me to be surveying boats in the year after which you do your samplings, et cetera. There's no detail about the samplings, et cetera. So my recommendation, as I said, would be to allocate some money to come up with a more detailed proposal and that you look at it and go from there. I also suggest that any type of analysis of wake boats, et cetera, should be coordinated with the University of Minnesota, St. Anthony Falls, they've done extensive surveys, and it may be beneficial to cooperate with them and give them an opportunity for some more data to analyze the impact of wake boats, you know, more data on what they've already done. Hopefully, they're going to come out with their study and recommendations soon, which I think would be pretty significant. So that's number one, very important. Also having to do with Lotus Lake, and for anybody out there in the public who doesn't know, I live on Lotus Lake, so just want everybody to know. The other thing about Lotus Lake is, maybe I missed it, I didn't see Lotus Lake listed as a vegetation plan. I, was my understanding that there was going to be a, almost a total vegetation treatment of Lotus Lake, but I don't believe it was listed in the chart that I saw, and so need to have information on that. But Lotus Lake definitely needs treatment. Right now, we have a lot of the algae, et cetera, already collecting in, in the lake, and it needs a treatment plan, in my opinion. Let's see, so I don't have too many minutes left here, talked about that. Vegetation, you know, on six B, you're having to do with autumn, it just, autumn development, it seems to me it's an inadequate summary of what the proposed change is to the permit, unlike the other, I forget which one, is it six C or whatever it is, there's a nice summary of what's going to be changed and how it's going to be changed, so we don't have to try to parse through a very long report. So I recommend that, you know, from now on, there'd be a better detailed description of what proposed changes would be. HC, having to do with salaries, it seems to me there's a lack of detail, which would only be standard to have and to be reviewed before deciding whether or not to make salary changes. Also, I note that the memo talks about violations of Fair Labor Standards Act. Curious as how's that was determined, and if so, I believe it's incumbent upon the district to immediately prepare to pay back pay if anybody has not been paid the correct amount of compensation that they're entitled to be paid. I believe there's also still some outstanding issues have to do with payment of interest on invoices by contractors. I don't know if that's been resolved, and this just kind of leads into my issue that I've brought up many times, is that I believe we need to have HR and Labor Council specifically to be able to advise us regarding employment issues in particular. And.
That includes your three minutes, Mr. Cook.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else have any public comments? None? Hearing none, we are on to reading and approval of the minutes. So first, we're at the minutes for the April 2nd workshop. Can we combine these two together? We have to do it separately? Okay. First, let's work on the approval of the April 2nd 25, 2025 workshop.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 2nd workshop of the Board of Managers.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, any comments, any changes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the April 20, or April 2nd workshop, please say aye.
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 I abstained since I was not here at the meeting.
Okay. Great. Next, we're at the approving minutes of the April 2nd regular meeting of the Board of Managers.
I'm moving that we approve the April 2nd regular meeting Board Managers minutes.
Thank you.
My second motion.
I had one edit.
You have one edit?
H254. This is Larry Cook's address. It says dive instead of drive.
Okay.
Line 54.
Is that it?
Yes.
That's just the one edit. Okay, all those in favor of the amended April 2nd 2025 regular meeting Board of Manager minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Next, we're at committee and member reports. Citizens Advisory Committee, do we have somebody here to represent the Citizens Advisory Committee?
Yes, Andrew.
Andrew, are you here?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes, we sure can.
Awesome, thank you. So the Citizens Advisory Committee met, and we had a wonderful presentation by Rachel Winnington, the Natural Resources Technician, and she talked about and did a presentation on the soil health study that is being performed and the residential lawn study project that's being done concurrently. And we're looking to work with her in obtaining more individuals to participate in those studies, and we're looking to do clusters. So as people look at this, they'll be able to go on the website and apply, and hopefully neighbors will apply, so when they're getting the information and data and collecting that data, it'll have a better impact on the study if we have neighboring properties involved instead of scattered properties. We did, we did go ahead and had our election, and I will be continuing as the chair, Jim as the vice chair, and Michelle as our recorder this year. So that's where we are with the individuals that are heading up the program, and we've had a lot of individuals in participation that we look forward to continuing. And our next presentation is going to be done by one of our members, which is Marilyn Torkelson, and she'll be doing a presentation on native plants and resilient landscaping, and that'll be on the 17th. So we look forward to having a manager attend to hear that as well.
It's on the 19th, right?
19th, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Andrew, and we'd like to thank you and all the other board members for stepping up and leading the CAC for the upcoming year. Any questions by anybody?
I want to go to the May 19th meeting.
You're going to volunteer?
I'll volunteer if nobody else.
Anybody else want to be there, or? Jill's volunteering.
I'll volunteer also.
Yeah, well, you can volunteer and I'll just go.
Okay.
Okay, so Manager Duval is your volunteer representative on the next CAC meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Next, we're at the March Personnel Committee Report. We did not have a March meeting, so that's why we are not, there is no Personnel Committee report to have on this. Following is the May Audit and Finance. Pardon what?
You know, we did, we did meet on March 28th, that's when we discussed the salary study that was presented by.
Oh, that's right.
By David Drawn Associates.
Okay, so I know that all of you did have the DDA slide presentation that was in your board packet, and we also discussed it at the District Administrator's Review, and I did bring you a bit of what we found through DDA and also what the org chart is at current, and that needs to be updated a bit in terms of what we end up doing over the next year for the district. The DDA report, if you all will remember, when we talked about this a bit, we found that some of our positions were less than what the salary survey came up with, and we also found that we did not have a need to have nine steps in our grade schedule. So we took a look at decreasing those from a one, level one, to a level eight, and we looked at how those jobs actually fit within a minimum and a maximum. And DDA is recommending that rather than go to a salary schedule based on performance for the increase that each individual will make, they are recommending instead that we go to a step process. And when we were all together, I showed you that step process where it starts off at step one and goes all the way up to, I believe, step nine, doesn't it? Has nine steps to it.
Eight.
And at the time that we were presented with the information from DDA, Terry wanted to go to each individual employee, see where they're actually at, look at whether or not we need to make a change to what the minimum is, if they're below minimum, and I don't believe we actually had very many people in that.
Four people that were below minimum.
Yeah. And the discussion was that when these people came up, individuals came up for review, at that time, we would make the adjustment. Am I correct, Terry, or have you done that adjustment?
The adjustment to bring them to their, to the minimum step at, at this meeting.
Yep.
And then next review would just start the step process.
Okay, okay. Did anybody have any questions about this before we?
So are the steps including a annual inflation factor, or is that something that's outside the step system?
So that's something that's outside the step system. We'll be looking at what our percent increase would be to each of the levels or the whole system as a whole. We actually asked DDA what they thought was going to happen this year or next year. I believe they said 3%.
Two and a half, 3 and a half percent is what he thought, so.
So Terry is going to use that for the budget dollars.
So that's sort of consistent how the state does there, is that that's negotiated and would be agreed upon by the managers, the cost of inflation?
Yes, yes.
And then the step is based upon a satisfactory performance review, I'm assuming?
Yes.
President Peterson, managers, yes. So one of the things that was discussed at the meeting, so based upon a satisfactory review, you get a step increase. Well, we did, Personnel Committee did discuss is if there is an employee who is exemplary, that I can go to the Personnel Committee and with their recommendation, give them an accelerated step of one and a half or two steps if they're exceptional, so we can have some, some merit base, motivation in there.
We just wanted to look at giving the District Administrator some latitude, especially now that we're making the adjustment to the step system. We wanted to make sure that we weren't in fact decreasing the rate in which somebody progresses or has already progressed and inhibit that from happening this year. So I specifically said, you've got to look at where they were last year within the entire line, the minimum to maximum, and then sort of look at where it is in the step system now.
I guess I'm confused whether we're following the step system or saying you could do what you want.
No, we're following, we're following the step system. But if someone's exemplary, we want to try to motivate people who are doing exemplary job, so.
Madam President?
Yes.
So the other part of that is, and we talked about putting together a report that showed the whole package, because we've tried to do a good job of finding good benefits that were a good fit for whether they were a family or a single person, so that we were competitive with other watershed states and that kind of thing, because we felt that, that adds value and that's important, and I mean, we've got good people, we want to retain them.
So one of the things that we've always known is that we pay the employees' cost for health, for example, and that isn't really normal in most organizations. There's usually a split of how much an employee pays and how much the organization pays. So it's an added benefit that we give to the employees, and what we ended up doing was, I believe, Terry, you've spoken to Liz about putting together a summation of our benefits plan as a whole, and I'm going to take a look at what percent is that benefits add.
Right, is it a compensation package or is just a?
So it's a good recruiting tool as well as people understanding how much benefits actually cost.
And that we value them.
Yes. Any other, any other questions, or?
Is that coming up then for a vote later on?
So it is on the agenda, item 77, 7C.
We're just accepting the report?
So we're just telling you what the report is. Any other question? Okay, hearing none, May Audit and Finance Committee Report. Who's speaking?
Yeah, well, we had our meeting in, earlier this week, so I should remember it all. Covered, covered a lot of ground. We continued the discussion on, on the new 12-month cash flow statement. We're still working on some details of that, but the plan is to have that available soon and.
June meeting.
June meeting. We'll have our first statement, and, and again, just for a quick review, it's a, it's a rolling 12-month detailed, forward-looking cash flow, so we don't currently have anything like that in our system. So it'll be consolidated, where we'll look at it quarterly, but it'll be a month-by-month review, and it'll go from our beginning cash balance, so that'll be the key point that ties into our current financial statements, and then it'll be a forward-looking projection. And that's going to require a fair amount of work between Scott, our engineer, and Terry, and reviewing all our projects and all of our cash flow items, where they'll manually adjust things based on what they see as the world looking out 12 months in advance. So, and then on a quarterly basis, I think the plan right now is to have that be part of a workshop meeting at that quarterly time where the board will review it in some detail. And so we'll have components of all the projects, we'll be able to ask questions, to look at the detail, looking forward on all the projects. So if some project slipped in time and it started early or it's moved back, we'll be able to see that and, and talk about it, and also see where it fits into our current budget process, but how it might spill over into the future as we get near the end of our current budget period. So it should give us a much clearer look about the timing of the cash flows and the grants that we may have applied for and didn't get, or a new one that came along. And so this will enable us to, to deal with a couple elements. One is to deal with our cash reserves on a more detailed notion so that we can see how we could optimize the cash that's not being used currently, and then plus it gives us a detailed record of, to support the, whatever decisions we're making looking forward. And then the second thing is to help deal with some of the uncertainties that are coming down the pike from the federal level as budgets are being cut and filtered on down through the agencies, through the states, through the counties, through the cities, and we don't know what those impacts are going to be currently, but we do know that there, a lot of them are in the works, and it's like a waterfall, they're working their way down. So people where we had partnered with projects on, that they were going to come in and support and be a partner, maybe they aren't getting their funding, and so all of a sudden, that might trigger something we should be looking at or doing differently. So again, it, it has multi, multitude of purposes, and we think this is going to be a good step to help manage, to give us a little more foresight into the future than just month to month looking backwards. So anyway, that's, that's out there, and we'll be able to focus in on that quarterly, and it's going to take time on the part of staff and the administrator and our engineer, bar engineering, because they're going to have to deal with a lot of the components of the specific projects, which they can't do now very easily. The closest thing we have to that now, and we'll try and reference it, is, is a schedule that, that bar does that shows the 10-year project cycle. It shows where projects are complete and ones that are, haven't started yet, and ones that are, that are in the middle somewhere, so should give us a lot more connected, a lot better connected information.
Let's see, Sage 50, discussion. The Sage 50 discussion.
Pardon?
The Sage 50.
Sage 50. So that's part of the analysis that we're continuing to work on also. And I don't have this handed out to anybody, but it's a, and I do have some copies here I can pass out. It shows the workflow that we mapped out about two and a half years ago, block charts, and it was meant to be an overall process, but in reality, it really maps our internal bill-paying process, because that's, we collect up all our electronic and paper receipts and we send them off to our accountants. You can't see it on the bottom here, but it's, it's five boxes that I think will, will replicate that entire process, process up here, but it'll involve only one person handling either an electronic invoice or a paper invoice, and from there on out, it'll just be a matter of the proper people looking at it to make sure it's appropriate, and then that all stays in one spot, never gets handled beyond the first time physically. So we're looking at that, and we're trying to get into the details of a, of the underlying accounting, the electronic software that our accountants are using, it's called Sage 50, and there are a lot of modules in there that we're discovering right now that we're not accessing, that I think we can be accessing directly. So anyway, we're working on that right now, and, and as soon as we can get this in place, that'll be the next steps. And also in the interim here, we've got to have a developed checklist. Right now, it's 28 steps internally what we're doing, and, and this is a checklist to, to kind of document what we're doing right now, and so in the interim, we're going to start following a process similar to this to make sure that we're getting the proper sign-off and everything, the approvals and, and the steps, but it'll also be a, kind of a map for leading into the new system. So that's about it.
Last, Jill?
Okay, so I have one thing that I keep liking to see, and that's the percentages. So that's been an issue for some people, but if we know the timing, so for, like Scott, when you're working on your stuff, that last page of your report to me sells a lot. So if I'm looking at the financial statements, which doesn't have at this point, like the revenue and expense part, it doesn't have the budget loaded at this point, but I'm going to get that in there, then we'll be able to see where expenses line up percentage-wise with what the whole budget is and where we are. But for me, I don't anticipate this taking a whole lot of your time, because we can look at that chart, say, okay, if it's under, over, or whatever percentage, you can look at that chart and know where you are exactly, and whether feasibility is 100% or, I mean, to me, that provides a lot of information, so it shouldn't be too much of an encumbrance. Make sense?
I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Just curious, how much does the Sage 50, this is, I'm assuming this is like a software thing we have to buy, right? Is this like really super expensive?
It's theirs.
So we, we spent a lot of time asking Red Path about it. We were not getting any answers, so manager developed, took it upon himself and did some research. It's actually $1,500 a year for the cloud-based platform, which would allow us to set different, different users permissions to go into it. So then Dylan could enter it directly, so we would have our internal philosophy where Josh would sign off on his ad collection stuff, I would sign off on mine, it would go to Dylan, Dylan would directly enter it into it, treasurer could access it.
Wow.
Look at it.
This is a huge improvement.
Right, because Dylan can then just get it right in there, and it's there instead.
Right now, it goes.
Which we wanted for a long time, but no, never, doesn't know how to ask.
It's really good.
Right now, it goes into spreadsheet, spreadsheet is sent to them, they take the data out of that spreadsheet, re-enter it into something else, and each of these are just opportunities for error.
Oh, yeah.
Nice job.
And then they take that data out and put it into our formatted treasures report, which is another opportunity.
Spreadsheets, back into spreadsheet.
Yep.
Wow.
So, yeah.
Tom's making progress big time.
This is good. Super good. Anybody have any questions, anybody else?
Very exciting to see this happening.
Yeah.
Be nice.
Okay, next, we are on the April Administrator Report.
So I do have one thing I would like to talk to you about. Staff Maxwell and myself met with representatives of the USGS, University of Minnesota, and Minnesota DNR, was that the one? They would like to, so they have done a couple of copper treatments to St. Albans Bay and Robinson's Bay in Lake Minnetoka, studying the efficacy of low-dose copper treatment on villagers and adult muscle populations, as well as on other native muscles. So they have approached the district, asking that.
Zebra muscles, no.
Yeah, no, the zebra muscles, asking that if we would be involved in sharing data with them and helping them get the permanent process through DNR to do that same study on Lake Riley. We were going to coordinate with the Lake Riley Association, start to bring them in loop and get theirs. So really, we want to get public. So really, we want to get public support for it, but I started out with the elephant in the room, what do you want for money from us? And at this time, they said none. So, in fact, they came to us and asked if they, any other data that we wanted them to collect. So it's really early in the process. I'll have more information from the managers as we move forward. What I'd like to do is at the June meeting, bring a resolution forward to the boards to discuss if you want to support this project or this initiative, or if you do not. We will have more information, we asked a lot of the questions that you would have, like what about the native muscle population? One of the things that we are, at least I'm thinking about, and I want to talk to Joe Bischoff about, is will the copper ions have any impact on the aluminum ions that are currently there? Because we certainly don't want to go backwards on Lake Riley, and we've done a really good job of getting that back to it. But what we've discussed is, can zebra muscles be treated like carp? Where we say there is a stocking level that a lake can maintain and still manage to have healthy populations, good water quality, et cetera. So I think that's the question we're really looking to answer by trying to do this. They were very clear that this is not an eradication goal, it is a control goal. And then what is that level to control it at? So I think it's a great opportunity. There are a few things yet I think that really need to be vetted in it, but after speak, I went into it very skeptical, and after speaking with that, this meeting, they allayed a lot of my fears about, you know, like for instance, you see a pretty dramatic decrease in phytoplankton and zooplankton right after it, but you also see almost an immediate rebound of those populations afterwards. So my question then would be, well, if we're doing it longer term, does the rebound become less and less and less each time? So those are the things to figure out, but it was a good conversation, I think an opportunity for the district to really do some research on this issue.
Yeah.
Did, has anybody looked at Minnehaha Creek Watershed District's treatment of Christmas Lake? They used it in those front two bays, and that was a pretty big deal.
It was, it was not effective.
Okay.
Yep.
It used copper there?
They used copper.
Copper on that as well. There are other products out there, but coppers, yeah. Yep. Treatment.
Treatment, okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, they, Christmas Lake, they cordoned off the area where they found them, treated just that area.
You had another question?
Yeah, I'm going to talk to Josh. No, because the copper stuff, that's pretty intense, right? We've been, like the Asian carp, we've kept control pretty much with the bluegill. So I just, I want to hear what your sense of this is, and the downside you might see.
Yeah, so we used the same product that they're going to be using, copper sulfate on Lake Anne and our rapid response treatment, that's a really common treatment for rapid response. And this is taking it from a very concentrated dose to a very, very small dose, because villagers are actually pretty wimpy, and you can, you know, easily kill them if you do the right, you know, do the right thing. Had good results in Minnetaka, they had some application issues on one bay, but they've kind of, you know, figuring out how to best treat them, and this would be kind of the next step essentially, is isolated lake instead of a bay on Minnetaka, because obviously there's a lot of movement in a bay, so.
So you're comfortable with us finding this, or are we observing them?
I am, like Terry said, they gave us, I was also skeptical going into it, because Riley is such a good lake right now, we did a lot of management to get it that way. But yeah, they addressed a lot of our concerns, and it would just be hammering out those things that Terry addressed.
So Joe's going to be helping us figure that out? With the aluminum?
I think it'll be a discussion with Joe, yeah.
Yeah, we wouldn't want to involve Joe in this process, especially where the aluminum sulfate factor into it. One of the things that we have discussed with collecting data is doing our own dives to do some quadrant sampling of, you know, first, are there native muscles in there? Second, what kind of population, what type of muscles are we seeing? So, you know, I think it's, I think it's an opportunity to look at our whole lake plans with another element in it, and I think it ties into that. You know, it gets into a bunch of other questions. This is just another treatment technique now that we're going to have to do forever, just like an old person going to the doctor, does this pain ever go away? Nope, you're just going to have to stretch that forever. So same thing, but
But just for Riley.
But if it's effective, it's, you know, it'll be good.
Right. I just wanted to be comfortable that you guys are comfortable, so.
I think, I think zebra muscles are enough of an issue and can cause enough of a shift in the ecosystem that I think it behooves us to try and find an answer to it.
I've seen what happens on Lake Michigan, so I know what happens.
Anything else through the Administrator Report?
I don't think so.
Anybody have any other questions?
Quick question, the access to the payroll system for per diems, any change on it?
That's the other thing, that is online, thank you. Okay, so here is where we're at with it right now. We have, I'm going to send out an email to all the managers of the things that I have from you, and what I'm missing, like I have everything from you, everything from Tom, there's some things I need, yet. We have, I have all the staff, they are in the system, so that email that you got is legitimate. So you should have all gotten a MyPay, something that came from MyPay.
Nope.
All of you should have gotten one.
You mean a while back, not recently?
Yeah, it was what?
Okay, when it initially came out.
Oh, maybe.
Right, that's what I think he's referring to.
That's what you told me not to do anything to.
Yeah, don't do anything with it yet, because it seemed suspicious, but I verified it with them, yes, that is legitimate. That will not take you into payroll, that will set you up an account with Thomson Reuters, is really what it will do. And then we will set up the accounts. I just reached out to Melissa, who is the project manager for RedPath on that, asking her, you know, what is a realistic rollout date? I think so, we're in the middle of a pay cycle that ends May 15th, so, and gets paid on June 1st. I'm thinking we probably do the May 15th to June, to May 31st period would be the first time that we'll have you in there, then for June 15th. So you'll all be entering your time directly, direct deposit into your accounts.
Okay, so would you like us to get ourselves up to May 15th before we get into setting the account up?
I mean, that would be easiest, but we could certainly, I mean, as long as it's documented, I can, you know, we can pay everything prior to that, the old way.
Okay.
And then everything moving forward through the system. You look confused, Manager Ziegler.
I do. You're saying we're going to get paid for the last half of one month, and the first half another month?
So the way, the way the payroll works, we're on a bi-weekly system. So really, you'll, so this meeting, if we were on the system, you would enter in right now, and then May 15th would be the cutoff, and then at May 31st, the check would go, the direct deposit would go into your account. If there's no meeting, if you don't have any meetings from May 16th to May 31st, you'll enter nothing, nothing will be direct positive, and then continue on.
Okay. So it's kind of by half month?
Correct.
Not a full month divided in half?
Correct, correct.
So it would be easier for you if we all submitted our per diems on the old form up through May 15th?
Yep.
Okay, everybody got that? It's on your list?
Yep. Anything you have back, going back all the way to January, if you haven't submitted, please submit those, and then we'll get that taken care of.
Are you entering every two weeks then? Madam President?
I think I'm going to have to be doing that, aren't I?
That's what I'm trying to figure out here.
I'm a very bad person, I really only did it twice a year before, and I think I'm going to have to be doing it a few more times.
So we're required to get it in every two weeks?
Yeah.
I'm not going to not give you your per diems, but yeah, make my life a lot easier.
Like we're doing a regular payroll.
Right, right, right.
Okay, because I do it once a quarter, so.
Bi-monthly, it's bi-monthly payroll rather than bi-week, or
Every two weeks?
Yeah, it's not every two weeks, it's twice a month.
You're paid the, you get paid the last day of the month and the 15th day of the month.
So it's not every two weeks.
Okay. It is, but it isn't.
Okay, just as long as we know what we need to do, and we'll get our stuff done.
I will send an email out to all the managers, going through, you know, the forms that I have, I'll send the blank forms of what's needed. If you look through your email and you don't have the MyPay anymore, let me know, and I'll have them resend you the email. And I think that's it, and then I will keep you informed of, if I hear back from Melissa and she says that June 1st date isn't going to work, or whatever, then
We'll adjust.
Adjust accordingly.
Okay.
Thank you for reminding me, Manager Nelson.
Anything else on the Administrator Report?
Another question, so the interweb is?
Oh, so that's up, I haven't populated, it's just sitting there, it's available? Are there things the managers, you know, I figure, you know, governance manual, tax forms, things of that nature, if there are other things that managers want there and feel would be helpful?
Okay, so I was hoping that some obvious things would be populated, we'd get the credentials to log in, and then we could give you our suggestions, so we don't all have to suggest the same things would be helpful.
Absolutely.
Good idea.
Yep, we'll do that.
Excellent idea.
We'll put some random things in there, and then Bazooka Joe comics, and
Do we have a sense of what it's going to look like and have something to look at?
Like, I'm assuming PCA you had
I had an intro.
That's kind of what I'm envisioning, yep.
And it was very useful, so.
It can be very useful, exactly. You know, we'll have to be careful, it's not for changing notes between class, so. Retrieving information.
One final comment, which is, I guess for, the link to the North Lotus Lake project is not functional within the meeting minutes, and could just fix that. It's fine on the website.
Or in the agenda itself?
The agenda itself, the link is not correct. Or it wasn't for
Dylan's on that.
Right, I figured.
Which link are you talking about?
Item 7E.
The one to the North Lotus Lake project.
Okay, April Staff Report, any comments or questions?
It works on it.
Not hearing anything? On this?
April Staff Report.
Okay.
You have some, yes.
Something I had I wanted to know more about. Something on nutrient stuff, I thought.
It's working now, Dylan.
Okay, all right, I'll have somebody later.
Okay.
Okay.
And then we move ahead to the April Engineers Report. Any questions of Scott? Scott, you have any comments?
As a Pedersen Managers, I have no comments, other than what's in the report.
Okay. Any questions, comments? The nice thing about getting your report is that it's very clear, and I can pretty much count on every month it being somewhat the same, where I can find things where I want them in the same format, so I'm very appreciative of that. Thank you. The April Regulatory Report, any questions, comments, anybody? No. So, sounds like that's it for our committee reports. Now we're on to the Manager Report, which you wanted to have moved, Manager Crafton.
Okay, probably aren't going to like this at all, but, so I've been thinking about stuff as we move forward, and there were some comments at a meeting we had recently, and it sounded like there was a questioning whether where we're going is in the right direction, almost. Something about whether there was literature to prove kind of what we're doing with the EAP thing was actual, and some comment about Gabe Brown, which I didn't quite get. But so I guess I just, what I wanted to talk about tonight was that, as I look, think about these things, and I look back on my life, I realize that I've been part of, they could change my whole adult life. And so I just wanted to challenge us and encourage us, because, I mean, just some quotes that are really meaningful to me. Margaret Mead's, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world, indeed, it's the only thing that ever has." And another one that was in one of Phil's Green's reports when we were working on Ballis Water, it was, "Constant change is the only constant, and you have two choices, react to the changes, or be proactive and guide change to a positive outcome." And I guess I see that in somebody like Gabe Brown, when their farm stuff was falling apart, and they were going broke, you know, hail would come in and destroy their crops, and they had to rethink something. So it was why I was concerned that that the feeling was, is because there's not something concrete out there, that somebody's already done, that it was an issue for us and for staff. And for me, it's not, because the things I've been involved with, I mean, you just go forward, and you keep learning, and you're growing, and you keep building a group of people, of like-minded people that come on to keep working on it. So I guess I wanted to be sure that, where we are on this, but, I mean, those farmers have taught me so much, they didn't have, they didn't have a roadmap, and they had to question what they were doing, figure out what they were doing. And we are all benefiting from what they've come up with, and what they've done, and what they've learned. I think a lot of people that actually voted for this administration did so because it's pretty broken. So even when you look at the Department of Eggs nutrition stuff, I mean, a lot of what's in the food we eat is Thompson's, and giving that to our kids, I mean, are we, to me, the whole system's broken. So to me, where we're going and what we're trying to do is incredibly important, and I guess I just, there were comments that made me wonder whether it's just me, or whether staff and consultants are, are we all on the same page, or what? Because I think we can go out and meet change, I mean, we got staff that's, you're collecting all the data, I mean, Elena's pulling stuff into databases, Liz is doing stuff with your water report, I mean, to make it more accessible to people so they can understand it. So I think we've got a lot to build on, and I think we've got a lot of resources within our cities. I mean, there was a reference to the water cycle on Minnetaka, it's like, there's like a YouTube explaining to kids what, how the water cycle works. So I just feel like this is a time of opportunities and growth, and I guess the one thing I really wanted to encourage people, there's Soil Health School, I've already enrolled in it, but Ray Archuleta's going to be talking about biomimicry, applying soil health principles, obviously, the epigenetics and building resilience into your operation, and I think, yeah, I would really hope that we could get staff to go, that would take, close the office for a day, and just let them go. It's in July, so I don't know if that works for everybody, but like the 29th and 30th, but the day that Ray there is going to be there particularly. I think we just have to keep learning, because it's more about applying the principles. It's not like there's a roadmap. I mean, when we started this government we've got now, there was no roadmap. People did the best they could to try to figure out a system they thought would work. So I've got a flyer on this, and I think I gave one to Liz, but I think we need to keep educating ourselves, we need to keep learning, and then take what we can that applies to what our situation is, and I know it's different, it's a lot more compacted and whatever. But I just, I hope that we rise up to the occasion, and go out to meet it, and keep learning and growing and sharing stuff, so. That was kind of my, what I wanted to get out there.
Thank you for the motivational words.
I have a couple of things.
Yes.
First, obviously, we've got resolutions for Minnesota Watersheds, it's pushed up much earlier than previous years, and that has to do with the new consultants, lawyers we have for the legislative process. They're saying, you know, you're waiting way too long, and you need to meet and talk with legislators ahead of time, and kind of get your foot in the door, not wait until they're in this very short time crunch period when they don't have time to think, let alone talk. They can't even get a budget, you know, what are you going to do? So that's on the agenda now, and that's why. Second thing is, in the Lake Association for Duck Lake, they've got a person at Carver County that's volunteered to come and talk to them about talk to them about goldfish and how to manage goldfish, what they've done and what's worked. And I know we've been kind of following, or staff has been following, I should say. We haven't gotten any updates as managers about the goldfish issue. And I know in some lakes and ponds, it's, it's really bad. You know, there's a few bass in Duck Lake, but they just stocked those again. So you know, but the goldfish population is, you can watch these orange pools swimming around in the lake. Their, their schools are in the hundreds, maybe more. I don't know. So I just wanted to mention that and find out, are we getting the same information? And hopefully we are. And if they do set something up, do we want to have a watershed staff person participate? In it? I mean, it seems like we're going to learn a lot of the same things we learned with regular carp, right? But maybe there's more. And do we know what harm the goldfish do to the regular fish population? I'm not sure we do. I mean, they don't compete directly. They certainly degrade the habitat.
That's precisely the issue with President Pedersen, managers, where we don't know the impacts of goldfish on it. I have had conversations with Tim Sunde, but I don't have a tremendous, like, right now they're working on trying to control it. I don't know what, if they're doing any actual research of the impacts of them. They're just looking at, we control that population. I don't know if, Josh, if you've got any more information on that. But I, I would be interested in attending the Duck Lake Association when the presentation is. What night is that?
Hey, they haven't set the date yet. They're still working that out.
I can call Rod. Rod, I assume, will be involved in it.
Rod Fisher?
Yeah.
Is that anything DNR would know about? Not NATO, so.
I think it's one of those things where everybody's kind of like waiting for somebody else to, to do something. I don't know of any other watershed district that's really, Nine Mile, yeah. You know, we've got it in duck, but otherwise it's in ponds and yeah, it's, so I think it is one of those things where we're just waiting on somebody else to come in and say, hey, here's what we found. To justify, you know, starting a new program on it. But yeah, I will, I will attend that. I would like to hear what he's got to say.
Okay.
So would you have to tag, just like you did Common Car, to figure out what?
That is what Nine Mile and Carver County did. I know they were tagging some fish and tracking movements, so.
Okay. Last year.
Anything else, Dave?
Nope, that's everything I had.
Any other manager comments?
I have.
Pat, Bonnie.
I have just a couple, just as to manager Crafton's. I think Michael Welch did a nice job about talking that it's the plan that's going to really set our direction and took an eye to what you were talking about. That sounds like the tenure plan is where that's going. So I find that exciting. He also, then we talked about the Riley zebra mussel project and I happened, and maybe read this in the the University of Minnesota, their current research they're doing and talking about zebra mussels making a shift to the ecosystem. They did a recent study and showed that walleye exhibited 72% higher mercury concentrations in lakes invaded by zebra mussels.
Interesting.
And walleye and infested lakes reached mercury concentrations exceeding the Department of Health thresholds at significantly smaller sizes, at 14 inches instead of 18 minches and something on yellow perch. But I thought, I'll give this to you if you haven't seen it. It was, that was a striking.
That is striking.
And you're talking about ecosystem impact on.
Striking in a bad way.
Yeah, striking in a bad way.
Seventy-two percent.
Obviously.
That's almost unbelievable.
It is. That's what caught my attention.
Oh, was that in?
In, University of Minnesota did it and it was walleye eating walleyes, that in fish, like that come out of lakes that are, have zebra mussels.
Anything else? No.
Yeah, it's the filtering. So they're concentrating everything at the bottom. And so like bottom dwelling fish like walleyes are, are getting more bioaccumulation. So, because they're spending all that time down there in that concentrated mercury level. So, yeah, it's a neat study, so.
Did I not read that Hennepin County now has decreased the amount of fish you should eat from any twin city lake? You know, they had it like one every two weeks from now. It's like, no, that's way too high still.
I know they put some new restrictions on even a few of the lakes in our watershed district. They refined some of the.
Yeah, I know Staff Ford has been receiving some phone calls from people. This has been.
I mean, it's every kind of fish. It's perch. It's not just one specific species.
Right, any fish will.
Any fish from, yeah.
It's good to know.
It's the one impairment we can't really get rid of, right? Because our, like Bush likes.
Without eating it.
A minus, you know, thing on it, but great, but still impaired from mercury.
Yeah.
Any other manager comment at all? Okay, good. Okay, that's good. We are now on to legal council report. Do we have a legal council report?
Super briefly, again, managers, I will just note in broken record style that there's still no movement on the chloride limited liability legislation. I haven't heard anything since the last time I told you that there was no movement on the limited liability legislation. I think that I have heard one sort of new idea of in, in the realm of shifting gears toward a regulatory approach, that the idea of refining the resolution that Nine Mile brought forward last month, no, excuse me, last year, the last meeting to really focus on PTA. But I don't know that that's going anywhere and I don't think that would necessarily be something for this organization to push and I would not recommend it. So I think we're going to start leaning on our other. It, it may well be time to start leaning on our other approach, that the limited liability may have run its course and that we need to start looking at a regulatory approach.
Okay.
And seeing what that's going to look like.
We'll look forward to you recommending what you think it is, when the right time might be, so.
Yeah, right. I, I, right now I will recommend some exploration. I, I think each of the, like the state, the counties, the cities need to look at who's willing to license.
Right.
I think licensing applicators to be smart, certified is increasingly looking like a way to go.
So a quick question on that, if I may.
Okay.
So like on Hennepin County, they have a, some kind of legislation that says anybody that applies rock salt for the county has to be certified. Is that correct?
It's been like eight or nine months since I met with the county and at the time they did not have that in place. So that might be something they added that I wasn't aware of. But that would have.
There was in the.
Applied a county, now that's a self-certified. It'd just be like Riley saying, okay, if you work for Riley, you have to do it. I'm something quite a bit broader.
It was on the Salt Week thing program. They talked about that. But the big gap seemed to be for the private applicators that are applying, like for Eden Prairie Mall, you know, they're not.
And they're pushing back.
And so there's no regulation on them, but there is on the, at the county law. Or at least that was the understanding they were.
Yeah, and I mean, well, it sounds like what the county is doing is what like Riley has done in its contracting is when Riley contracts for work, you have to have, you know, invasive species control measures. When you're working for us, you're sure not, I say us, when you're working for the watershed organization, you can't be contributing to the problem, to be frank. And that's a contracting framework. It sounds like that's what Hennepin County has adopted. That's a good step.
Yeah, it seems like going county by county, if you hit the metro area, you've got a large part of the problem taken care of without having to go state.
President Pedersen, Manager Ziegler, to that point, I, I'm just thinking about the presentation we received from Eden Prairie a couple of months ago where she said they have a private contractor that does their parking lot and they seem to have kind of carte blanche leeway to, to apply as they see fit. So, and maybe when we're in our discussions with cities, that's one of the things we suggest to them is that.
Tighten it up is what you're saying.
Okay, so I believe that's it for legal.
That's all I have, President Pedersen. Thank you.
Great. We're on to the consent agenda.
In the past, we've always had a motion to
We, I guess we decided that we really did not need to have a resolution to accept the reports. So that's why it's not on here.
I don't know that that was advertised.
Uh, okay, on the consent agenda, Terry did tell me that Resolution 2025-029, the number has been changed to 032, the 2025-032. And there's one extra sentence at the end of that particular resolution.
There's a language in that resolution, no wait, that was.
There's a whole different resolution. Twenty twenty-five dash oh two nine.
Pull that, pull it off. We'll discuss that.
Salary thing and one of them says the alum treatment.
Uh, no, this is the alum. We're talking about the alum treatment.
Six A.
Six A.
Pull that off and let's discuss that under seven eight, new business.
Okay.
If managers are okay with that.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? We're just pulling it down to seven eight? Okay, all right.
So I'd like to make a resolution, I'm sorry, a motion to adopt the consent agenda items that remain, B, C, and D.
Second. Great.
Go ahead.
Uh, any other questions, comments? Sounds like none. So all those in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Oh. I would like to. No, that's okay. I've.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda resolutions, all listed under B, C, and D, please say aye.
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 Opposed, none. Uh, so now we're on to new business, which would be seven, the very first one, which would be Resolution 2025 dash zero three two, which is about Round Lake.
I was just here for Chen Hassan.
Want not to hang out with us for the night?
Very, very.
Come on, oh.
Yeah.
You only got a block. I just wanted to provide one note. I really appreciate Terry and Scott shepherding through the, the process. They're, they're very helpful.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Bob Bean, I'm with Bolton Mank Engineering, I'm something engineered for the Chen Hassan project on Frontier Trail.
I did, I, I did have a question for him that I brought up during the workshop. Is that appropriate to ask him about that or later?
I, uh.
I think you probably should ask him that later.
Okay.
Regarding the project or regarding the salt design?
Both. I happen to live within the project.
Yeah, I know. I've met with you on, as far as, we were talking about your rain garden on your corner there.
Yeah, let's, um, I can put you in touch with Charlie Holly is probably who I'd start with and then he'll send you that way.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thanks, Bob.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, so now we're back to the Round Lake Resolution.
So, President Pedersen, managers, I sent the resolution to Mr. Welch two days ago. He got changes for it. And in conversing with him prior to this, they are substantive enough that he would like to take you through these changes. So that, Mr. Welch.
Oh, alrighty then. Mr. Jeffrey and managers, the managers, the resolution is, it just takes more action than it did in the prior version that was uploaded and we got the, the new one uploaded here late in the day today. So I thought we should walk you through that and mention there are some findings that have been added and specifically the very last finding finds that the comments did not warrant any changes to the project plan. And that there is a finding that the procedural comments that were made by Mr. Cook were unavailing. So the resolution proposes that, so you adopt that finding. Then it goes through and it adopts a plan amendment, which is the Round Lake addition to the plan at $60,000. It orders the implementation of the project and directs that the cost funded through the watershed wide levy. It directs that there be a reimbursement agreement prepared between the district and the city of Eden Prairie for later approval by the board of managers because the city is going to reimburse the cost of Round Lake. And it directs the administrator to distribute the plan amendment in according to, in accordance with the applicable legal requirements. I'll leave it at that, but be ready to answer questions.
Anybody have any questions? I think we've covered this a couple of times before. So you're adding a couple of what I would consider somewhat minor things to this. I.
They're very significant things.
But legally, of course, they are.
Legally, they are very significant and they are, the project, the underlying project, I think, has not changed. The application of the alum to the.
And the fact they're going to pay us back for applying it.
That, that's a big one, too.
Right.
Yep.
So what's the big significance?
The findings themselves.
Yeah, the managers are ordering the project, adding it, or adding it to the land, then ordering it and directing an amendment, an agreement with the city of Eden Prairie to get the money reimbursed for applying the alum.
Okay, so we're legalizing the steps that we already had.
Right.
We have not yet taken these steps at all.
Well, yes.
But we've outlined what we, where we want to go.
What?
Yes, we are, we are laying out specifically the steps that we are taking to get this project.
Okay, so I thought we discussed.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to adopt Resolution 2025 dash zero three two.
Also move.
I'll second the motion to adopt Resolution 20, 2025-032.
Right. I'm assuming we've all had our questions answered. Yes, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Uh, next is the resolution to accept the March Treasurer's Report and approved payment of the bills.
I'll move that we adopt the amendment to pay the bills and accept the report.
I'll second if it's needed.
Great. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 25 dash zero three zero, accepting March Treasurer's Report, approved payment of the bills, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. It passes. Next is adopting Resolution 25 dash zero three one, establishing the salary compensation and step methodology for the staff.
I move that we adopt Resolution 25 dash zero three one. I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 25 dash zero three one with the salary compensation step methodology, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Call for resolutions for Minnesota Watersheds.
President Pedersen, managers, so within there, in the packet, I have included the resolutions that were presented last year. What I would like to do, Manager Ziegler laid it out, they have moved the schedule up. They want the resolutions by June first. I have talked to Minnesota Watershed, told them our next meeting is not until June fourth, so that we would not have the resolutions till June fifth. So they're aware of that and they're okay with that. So what I am asking, I guess tonight, is for the managers if they have ideas for resolutions they'd like to put forward or just stick with ones that we've got from last year, they'll stay on there to let us know. I will work with legal to draft some language that, to convey what it is you're asking. Come back to you at the June first meeting or June fourth meeting, excuse me, with those resolutions so you can either move to send them forward or, or not. You know.
Any questions, any of the managers?
So, um, there's, there's a meeting scheduled. So, um, there's, there's a meeting scheduled to get together and talk about the salt issue. Is that correct? Thought I had one that I got my calendar for later this month.
We have the workshop for the district administrator on May twenty second. Maybe you're thinking of that.
Yeah, so there's that one.
Yeah.
That's a special meeting.
Right.
I guess we could amend that agenda to add this.
On there if we need to.
If you'd like.
Mr. and Madam President, I'm really curious if there is a legislative salt meeting that.
Yeah.
Yeah, because he hasn't heard about it and he's working on it.
I don't know about again. But I can check back with Managers Ziegler on that. I'm curious.
I'm not, I'm not seeing it in my calendar, but I thought I got. Ask Jan right now.
From Jan or from someplace else?
I thought it was from like Nine Mile or something. I'm not seeing it. But it, it seems like we need to get together as a group of people who are interested in the salt and kind of brainstorm the direction where we want to go. Actually, I think that even the legal people for, from the lobbyists are going to be involved.
Oh, I haven't heard anything. And they're not including him.
I want to find out.
Well, it's kind of the thing is, if you don't know who's already working on it, that's a big, big gap.
I'll follow up with you offline, Managers Ziegler, if that's okay with you.
That's fine.
Would Jan know about that?
I don't think from a resolution perspective, I don't recommend that a new resolution on quite is a thing that's needed right now. So not something that needs to come together in the next month for your consideration. The, the one that was adopted last year provides for a regulatory approach, just small R, sub, small A. And then what exactly that would be is going to take some work to figure out. We talked about it a little bit earlier.
So my, my recommendation would be to use and move forward with the resolutions we have.
That's what I would also agree with that. I concur. That we already have. Do you have anything else you wouldn't want to add?
I had a comment on the resolution for the public noticing, if that's.
Oops.
Okay.
He needs a drink.
Need to give him a moment.
What resolutions do we have already?
Uh, so the ones that were in the meeting, Dylan, can you whip those up? What resolutions did we have?
There was salt and I thought wake boat.
Wait, the wake boat one was there and.
Not a salt one. It's the, yeah.
It's the wake.
No, it's the TUP thing. We want a, we want a representative on the TUP.
Oh, that's right.
Alternative noticing and then representative on the TAC were the two that probably brought forward last year.
Yeah.
Give me.
You survived.
Seems there's two, two tunnels there.
So we only just have the two resolutions?
That is correct.
Just the two.
It's correct. Should be.
Neither of these was adopted by the last year, right?
Yes, it did. Or did, yes, it did. Yes, it did.
So you don't have to resubmit it.
Oh, yeah.
It wasn't prioritized, but that's a simple matter.
And did you have anything?
Are you talking about the TUP one? Which one are you talking about?
Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
So a question on the alternative noticing and I believe there, it sounded like there's pushback potentially with newspapers or, you know, going to websites. I I'm wondering if we've also considered the approach of expanding the area that it doesn't have to be published within the county next to us so that you could have maybe a smaller newspaper from a county or two away that just sort of expands the scope of what a paper could cover. That might be a more palatable option. I don't, just throwing that, didn't know if that's been discussed. I wasn't part of that, coming up with the resolution.
Wasn't discussed. The other thing I'm thinking about, did the resolution specifically call out E newspapers only, you know, like, for instance?
Right, so like the hard, the news space of general circulation, I think the state statute, and you can correct me if I, my recollection is it's where the newspaper is published and like the Sun Sailor is published in a NOKA, which is outside, not in adjacent county or within our county. So it makes it complicated. So it's.
But the distribution is within a certain.
No, it's where it's published.
Oh.
Is what I believe it says.
President Pedersen, managers, should I work with legal to review the language of that and revise it in some way that might be more palatable and more.
Move us forward to getting, so we don't have to look at the Star Tribune, which is incredibly expensive, but we could maybe use something from New, I don't know, uh, Prior Lake, something that's nearby.
So I have a question. Star Tribune now is putting out a daily newsletter that's free to anybody that subscribes. I don't have a subscription to Star Tribune, but I get the daily newsletter every single day from them.
And, and those types of things would not fit in the way of the legislation clearly. So writing the resolution to include those type, Carver County has come up with a new E newspaper.
That would be really terrific.
Like that, yeah.
Because then you aren't paying for the service.
Right, but see, that's part of the pushback is that the.
Yeah, the remaining print.
That's what pays for the print industry that we do have, right?
Remaining fish wrapped.
So.
Okay, so you'll.
Work with, with legal on revised language for that.
And the two that we've got, anybody have anything else they want to add to that if we're not going to do the, the salt thing? But I think that's it. Okay? Okay, um, the task order fifty two, studying the impacts of the wakeboards on alum application in Lotus Lake.
President Pedersen, managers and Engineer Sobek is available to speak on this more intelligently than I am, but, um, so Mr. Bishop presented to you a last meeting about, you know, how the, how the protocols would work. It's really going to be looking at does alum treatment in shallow areas translocate to the deeper areas thereby rendering it ineffective in those areas? So that's how this study is set up, is to look at translocation of the hominosulfate. What I would like to point out is we currently do not have budget for this, so we would need to take it out of reserve to pay for this project. We have adequate funds in reserve to pay for this, this study, but.
What's your recommendation?
How much was it?
Six.
Uh, what was thirty?
Forty thousand.
So I'm just going to look that up. I will go.
Says not to exceed forty.
Forty thousand.
And the bulk of that was in the analysis, which could be deferred, but we could do the core samples and get the data while it's relevant.
Uh huh.
If we chose not to.
To, to do all the analysis.
To do all the analysis right now, because it's, that would be a very smaller expense, so.
My recommendation is I do think it is good information for us to have. If we are going to, if we know that the release rates in these shallow areas are higher than in areas that have been treated, we do know that this lake is, is heavily populated with wake boats. I, I think it's good information for us to have. And since we happen to be doing, have just done an alum treatment and we are going to be doing sediment coring on this lake this year anyway. It does align well with what we have. If we do it now, we can capture the early boating season, start getting that survey in.
I think it's valuable. I know, um, one lake in northern Minnesota did pass a law limiting the area where the wake boats could operate to twenty feet deep or more.
Right.
In addition to being five hundred feet from shore.
Okay.
At least five hundred feet from shore. And they actually had a big sign made with the map of the much smaller lake area where the lake, the wakeboards, wake boats would be allowed. So, and they got it passed and everything. And they admitted at the end that they don't actually have any lake, wake boats on their lake yet. So, you know.
Better be proactive than.
That's the way that you busted, uh, you know, eighty to a hundred thousand dollars for a wake boat. So, you know, after the homeowners that live on the lake have invested that money, then it's a lot harder.
Yep.
It's an agreement. But at any rate, they felt they had enough data for twenty feet, but it seemed like it was what do I want to say? It wasn't that scientific. They had a camera down watching as a wake boat passed. And the little ribbons on the anchor kind of moved around. And so they said, oh, well, that's, that's it, right? It's like, well, okay. Doesn't mean it moved much sediment, not as much as a goldfish moved.
If I was the one I'm thinking of, they also didn't have a landmark that you could look at and say this point in time and this point in time is looking at the same spot, too.
So anyway, it seems like there should be some more scientific data than what is out there and being used as the best information available.
Bonnie.
Manager Ped, President Pedersen, I just, uh, one of my suggestions, I said, I support us doing this. I think it's very important. And it's a good time to do it. The timing seems right, that the title of this be, represent the scope of what it is we're doing. Kind of like here when you're writing a thesis paper, you know, Lotus Lake Recreational and Wake Boat Impact Assessment on Alum Treatment in a Shallow Lake, you know, something instead of just a Lotus Lake Wake Boat Impact Assessment, sounds like a very large scope. Just throwing that out there because set expectations appropriately of, and if somebody relies upon this information, they know what they're getting and looking at because there is a lot of interest in this area.
That is important, that it captures what we're truly doing.
I, and the scope of the project. Um, there's a, I don't know if they, when they designed where they're going to sample, if they've done that with knowledge of the traffic patterns on the lake. I would, the pinch point seems, that is where two boats go side by side repetitively and there's not a sample in that area and that feels like a very important area. It's right next to the public beach and they come within five feet of me consistently. You know, when I'm swimming there at the beach. It's, it's, I, I point at them to go further away and then they wave at me and. So it's, it's not, I'm like, do this and they, so I, I just. And the East Bay, they, the wake boats, very rarely if ever go in that area because that's where people tend to dock and hang out, same with the far end of the North Bay. So just if we want to focus them, I'd be happy to talk with someone about, I'm out there almost daily, so I watch. You know, sort of know the patterns of where people go and what the, because in the larger parts, you know, you're, I guess you're apart from each other, so it's not the same. So this is just for.
Internal stuff, right? That's all we're doing here. We're not doing anything with you or anything else.
We'll share the data with anybody who wants it.
Oh, yeah, I mean, but.
Have to.
To me, this is site specific. This is important for us to know this stuff. So I, I just wanted to make sure.
I'm also in favor of doing.
This is just internal for this particular deal.
I'm really concerned that there's going to be an increase in the cost of alum and I would hate to see the money we've already put into it already destroyed by, so I'd much rather know now before we put more alum down. So.
Yeah, those are the com, and then I also, I guess, Manager Larry Cook mentioned it, if they reached out at all to the U of M researchers for input on like the locations or just reviewed the setup if they're interested because they have done so much work of, if they have any suggestions or ideas.
As long as it doesn't cost us.
Well, right, it just, as a courtesy, it's like, we're doing this, you know, is there.
Are you looking for co-author on this?
Yeah, I think they're going to charge us. I'm thinking through that.
Well, I, I don't.
I know that Joe Bishop is in contact with the group and there's another person at bar. I'm trying to think of who it is. I'm actually working closer with them. Joe told me it probably means nothing to you because you don't deal with those folks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, I'm looking, looking for a motion.
On a casual basis, I was more based upon the relationships that already exist.
I'd like to make a motion to approve task order number fifty two for the impact of wake boats on Lotus Lake on the distribution of the alum treatment.
I'll second.
Thank you. I believe we have answered questions, so all those in favor of the task order fifty two, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Okay, um, the next one is announcing the results of the annual review of the administrator and I have a little written statement. Uh, at a special meeting on April eighteenth, twenty twenty five, the board of managers met in a closed session for the purpose of evaluating the performance of the district administrator Terry Jeffrey. The salient points of the evaluation are as follows. Uh, we looked at six major categories of accountabilities, which is, number one, with the board of managers, develop and adjust goals, programs, policies, projects, and priorities to ensure prudent use and management of water and related land resources in the district. Number two, manage district activities to implement the district's goals and objectives through coordination with government agencies and supervision of district consultants, vendors, and contractors. Number three, manage district budgets and finances to ensure that resources are available to accomplish district goals and objectives and to maintain financial stability. Number four, represent the district in the community and support the board's similar efforts demonstrating leadership that helps to achieve district goals and objectives. Number five, perform related duties consistent with the role of district administrator as directed by the board. Number six, perform other duties as apparent or assigned. The managers rated Mr. Jeffrey's performance at a total average score of three point nine five on a scale of one to five or exceeds requirements. Based on this rating, Mr. Jeffrey's years of experience and our compensation guidelines, that would be the new ones. The board of managers approved by a vote of three to two, a six point two five percent salary increase to one, a hundred and twenty two thousand, five hundred and seventy five dollars. That's it. Okay, next, we are on the discussion items on the Cook lawsuits. I believe, um, we probably will need to go into closed session.
I do recommend that the managers go into closed session to discuss the two ongoing lawsuits filed by Larry Cook against the watershed and others.
Okay, I need somebody to make a motion to go into closed.
Also move for that specific purpose.
Second motion.
Thank you. All those in favor of going to closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Off we go. All right.
Thank you.
Back in.
And we are back in open session. Uh, we only have a couple of items left on the agenda, one of which is the upcoming board topics, which you could see on May twenty second, we'll be meeting here again to discuss the work plan. I will be sending you out, board managers, a, uh, an email with kind of a summation of how we're going to see that meeting based on the evaluation procedure itself. I promised you I would do that and I've got it all put together.
My, my goal is to get you a work plan by the fourteenth to review. The audit has taken some odd twists and turns because of, of the, the property acquisition and all of the things surrounding it. So that's been consuming a bit more of my time than I had hoped it would, but I will have it to you no later than the fourteenth.
Okay, so that's our next meeting here.
Have a proposed time for that?
Yes, we did, uh, set up.
One thirty.
One thirty, right? One to three, one to three.
Thank you.
Okay, um, then the budget discussion.
Yep, so tentatively June fourth, um, for sure the July meeting. Um, June fourth might just be a skeleton of it, um, without too many numbers, but there'll be at least enough for us to.
Know what you're doing.
Prioritize. Yeah.
And you apparently wanted to say something about district staffing and resource needs.
Yeah, and that, that, I didn't put a date because really that'll probably come later on in the planning processes. We talk about the new initiatives we have and do we have the expertise and skills on staff and people to do that, you know, so.
And everybody can see the upcoming events. Uh, do you have anything else you want to add or anybody wants to add here?
So Creek Week of this year, we're going to start it with the cycle of the creek, uh, North Lotus Lake. Um, we're also going to use that as one of our outreach events to get public input on the North Lotus Lake project. Some good things going on in that. Other than that, oh, Minnesota Water, that's the one thing I do need. Um, um, some good things going on in that. Other than that, oh, Minnesota Water, that's the one thing I do need to know. So, they are going to charter a bus from here if they have enough people.
Is it forty?
By May 19th, I think was their deadline. Um, so if there are managers that would go, if they could get on the bus, please let me know. I will pass that along to Jan.
Going to do our own.
I, I, I figure it would probably be easier to capitalize on the, they're just going to charter a bus.
No, I'm fine with that. It's just that you made the point that, well, we could do our own, so I don't.
Yeah, that, that was before I was aware that they were doing.
Still keep that as a backup plan if there's not enough people for the bus, right?
Sure, we could, yeah.
It actually says that in the email that we got too, that if there's not enough people, then you have to get there yourself, so.
Okay, so we should let Jan know we want to go.
And then do we sign up individually through that email?
Yes, it's right on the email.
No, no, I, I saw that. I'm just asking.
Either do that or, or let me know, whether, whatever you prefer. If you prefer to be reimbursed or if you prefer to be, uh, to have the district pay it upfront, or you could say you want to go and tell Jan to bill me and, and that would probably work.
That's how we do that then? Say bill.
Bill, bill Terry personally.
I like that approach.
And still have, still bill Riley Perg?
Yeah.
Okay.
That sounds like the best, yeah, way to do it.
Yeah.
Okay, everybody, I'm looking for someone to motion to adjourn.
Is there a comment on the Water Resource Conference?
Uh, nothing yet. There, it's calling for abstracts right now.
Okay.
That's where we're at.
How much was that last year?
Hmm, three hundred, it depends on if you hit the early burnout, but yeah, 350 is in my head for some reason.
This soil health thing, that's going to have a lot of good contacts on me.
Okay.
Hundred and twenty-five bucks if you've joined for.
When is it and where is it?
July 29th or 30th and you'd probably only, as long as, I would just go to the bay that.
I'll be at the, well, at time. I'm just going to do that.
But it's going to be good stuff.
I'm going to do this. Hold on, I'll just do this.
Take a picture. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I mean, otherwise.
We have a motion. Do I have a second? Thank you. Okay, we are voting on adjourning. All those in favor to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. We are adjourned.
Forty-six, sorry.
Thank you all for attending. For good meeting.